Good afternoon and welcome to the Committee on Hospitals. At this time, please place your phone on vibrate or on silent mode. If you want to submit testimony, send it to testimony@council.nyc.gov. Once again, that's testimony@council.nyc.gov. At any time during this hearing, do not approach the dais. Thank you for your cooperation. Chair, we are ready to begin.
I want to start by saying we are discussing a very sensitive topic. So be mindful of triggers, if any. Please take a break. And this one is personal to me. We have to learn and everyone in the world, we need to know that. No is no. There is no no that mean yes. No is no. Good afternoon, everyone. I'm Councilmember Mercedes Narcisse, Chair of Committee on Hospitals. Thank you for joining us for this very important hearing about trauma-informed care for rape victims in New York City Health and Hospitals. As we all know, sexual violence is a devastating issue that affects millions of people well right. It is a crime that leaves lasting physical, emotional, and psychological scars. And victims of sexual assault often require specialized care and support. Just in New York City, 429 rape cases and 1,420 other sex crimes have been reported to NYPD since the beginning of 2023. Some estimates show that over 785,000 women in New York City have been victims of forcible rape at some point in their lives. Meanwhile, about 50,000 rapes occur each year in our city alone, and many of which are left unreported in parts due to stigma against the victim and gaps within our healthcare and criminal justice system. There are few concerning data points that I want to mention. According to CDC, young people are at higher risk of experiencing rape and sexual violence. And I have to say, unfortunately, some of the folks can be family members. Of all the female victims, 79.6% reported it first occurred before the age of 25. 42.2% reported their first victimization before turning 18. And 30% reported being raped between ages of 11 and 17. Of all the male victims, 24% reported it first occurred prior to the age of 18. 20% reported their first victimization between the ages of 11 and 17. And over a quarter, 27.8%, reported being raped when they were 10 years of age or younger. Furthermore, reports show that young women of color experienced sexual violence at a higher rates as approximately 40% of Black women reported experiencing coercive contact of a sexual nature by the age of 18. And Latina as well. Studies also indicate a connection between immigration status and increased vulnerability to reoccurring sexual assault. As per CDC, women who identify as bisexual had the highest lifetime prevalence of rape, 46%, as compared to their heterosexual, 17.4%, and lesbian, 13.1%. In fact, in 2014, New York State Office of Victim Services reported that an estimated 50% of transgender individuals are sexually assaulted at least once during their lifetime. These numbers are unacceptable. Thankfully, in recent years, there has been a growing recognition of the importance of trauma-informed care for rape victims. Trauma-informed care is an approach that takes into account the unique needs of individuals who have experienced trauma, including sexual violence. It recognizes that trauma can have a profound and lasting impact on a person's life and that individuals who have experienced trauma may require special care and support to heal and recover. In New York City Health and Hospitals, we have an opportunity to lead the way in trauma-informed care for rape victims. By adopting a trauma-informed approach to rape care, we can ensure that every victim who comes to our hospitals receive the care and support they need to heal and recover. This means providing comprehensive medical care, including forensic exams, STI testing, and emergency contraception, as well as mental health support and counseling. But trauma-informed care is more than just providing medical care. It means create a safe and supportive environment that recognizes and responds to the unique needs of each victim. It means training our staff to recognize the signs of trauma and providing them with the tools and resources they need to respond effectively. And it means partnering with community organizations to ensure that victims have access to the support and resources they need to recover. The importance of trauma-informed care for rape and sexual violence survivors in New York City Health and Hospitals cannot be overstated. By adopting a trauma-informed approach, we can ensure that every victim who comes to our hospitals receive the care and support they need to heal and recover. I don't know, I'm not so sure about recovery. It still help? It is a matter of public health and safety. I urge you to support our efforts to make trauma-informed care a priority in our hospitals and healthcare system. I want to conclude by thanking the committee policy analyst, Manoa Bud, for doing excellent work. Thank you. And my chief of staff, Saye Joseph, and all my staff for their work on this hearing, as well as the advocates and the survivors present. Thank you. I will now turn it over to committee staff to administer the oath. Or before that, we would like to hear from some panels.
Hello, everyone. We will begin with public testimony first. So I will call on the first panel. The first panel is Emily Miles, Grace Ann, and Amber Zhao. Whenever you're ready, you can come up.
Thank you. You may begin.
Good afternoon, Chair Narcisse and members of the Committee on Hospitals. Also, happy birthday, council member. Thank you so much for your time today, especially having this hearing on today, Denim Day, and in the month of April where we acknowledge Sexual Assault Awareness Month. My name is Emily Miles. I'm the Executive Director of the New York City Alliance Against Sexual Assault. Founded in 1999, the Alliance works closely with the city's rape crisis programs and hospitals, college campuses and universities, district attorney's offices, the New York Police Department, and many others to raise public awareness and create sustainable change for survivors. New York City's network of rape crisis centers is unique. In other cities and states, most programs supporting sexual violence survivors are housed within community-based organizations, while in New York City, our programs are nearly all hospital-based. Though there are a number of benefits to this design, it also brings challenges. Rape crisis centers embedded in hospital systems lack an independence of voice, and this is where the Alliance comes in, to serve as the voice and lead advocate for these rape crisis programs and survivor-serving organizations. According to the New York State Survivor Bill of Rights, every survivor that presents in a hospital emergency room has the right to receive medical care related to sexual assault at no cost to themselves. Medicine is also provided to prevent pregnancy and sexually transmitted infections. Some hospitals choose to go beyond these minimum requirements and take steps to become safe designated hospitals, which requires the facility to meet 15 minimum requirements as outlined by the State Department of Health. Of the 50 hospital emergency rooms in New York City, only 19 have received official safe designation. 11 of those are part of the health and hospital system, making H&amp;H a critical access point for survivors to receive recommended standard of care. We have four main concerns related to standards of care for survivors, including a lack of safe examiners, a lack of access to certified rape crisis advocates, a lack of access to long-term trauma-informed follow-up care, and a lack of consistency and standard of service delivery. Before diving into our concerns, I want to note that the 11 H&amp;H hospitals are staffed with incredibly dedicated personnel who are doing tremendously difficult work, often experiencing vicarious trauma themselves. And where the H&amp;H system is falling short is not the fault of these individuals, but more of a reflection of a system that is under-resourced and underfunded. Legally, any medical professional can perform a sexual assault forensic exam and collect evidence, though research demonstrates that these exams are best provided by a specially-trained, Department of Health-certified safe examiner. Unfortunately, we know that many hospitals are suffering an extreme shortage of safe examiners, resulting in survivors either having to wait for extended periods of time or, in the most drastic of cases, being transferred to another hospital for services. While the lack of safe examiners was chronic even before COVID, the problem has only increased since, with many hospitals having so few examiners on staff that multiple shifts go completely uncovered. We also have a concern about a lack of rape crisis advocates. I know I'm at time. A lack of access to continuing trauma-informed care and a need to standardize across the system, but you can find our recommendations also in our full testimony.
Thank you.
Good afternoon, and thank you for the opportunity to provide testimony before the Committee on Hospitals. My name is Grace Ann, and I am the Director of Safe Horizon Staten Island Community Program. Safe Horizon is the nation's largest nonprofit victim services organization. We offer a client-centered, trauma-informed response to 250,000 New Yorkers each year who have experienced violence or abuse. We are increasingly using a lens of racial equity to guide our work with clients, with each other, and in developing the positions we hold. We are grateful to Chair Narcisse and the City Council for holding this hearing today on trauma-informed care for survivors of rape and sexual assault in the H&amp;H system. April is Sexual Violence Awareness Month, and today is Denim Day, and we must do everything we can to support survivors and end sexual violence once and for all. Our dedicated staff supports survivors of sexual violence across all programs, including our counseling center, Child Advocacy Center, 24-hour rape and sexual assault hotline, and our community programs. And our Staten Island Community Program operates Staten Island's only rape crisis program, which offers immediate crisis intervention to survivors of rape and sexual assault. Although our program serves Staten Island University Hospital and Richmond University Hospital Center, which are not part of the H&amp;H system, we felt it important to testify about the challenges facing survivors on Staten Island and to amplify the testimony of our sibling RSA programs testifying today. Some of the highlights, some of the challenges I want to highlight today is that our program is on call overnight and on weekends, and we depend on volunteers. Since the pandemic, it has become increasingly difficult to recruit volunteers and meet with survivors at the hospitals. This year, we are seeking speaker's initiative funding to support the salary of a full-time social worker, as well as compensation for advocates' training and services. This support would allow our program to continue supporting survivors across Staten Island in the immediate aftermath of their assault. We deeply appreciate our relationship with both hospitals and their dedicated staff, and our testimony today is by no means a critique of either hospital. We are on call overnight, providing telephonic support due to the lack of advocate volunteers, and we oftentimes find ourselves supporting nurses and hospital social workers as well. We are challenged by the mandate that rape crisis programs must provide transportation to survivors, and we do not have a dedicated source of funding to provide transportation and clothing, and we are often left to manage on our own. There is a severe lack of support for survivors with severe mental health needs, and we are challenged by language access as well. Our staff are able to use a translation service, but it is unethical to use translation services to provide counseling. Billing has been a major problem as well, and although the forensic rape examination is covered, sometimes other services are still billed to our survivors. And to a hospital, a bill is still a bill, but that bill means so much more to a survivor. A survivor may not have insurance, or the survivor may not want to use their family's insurance because of safety concerns, privacy, shame, et cetera. Receiving a medical bill for sexual assault can be triggering, re-traumatizing, and deeply overwhelming. You can take a look at the written testimony for some of our other challenges, and thank you so much for the opportunity to testify today.
Thank you. And you're going to provide, you provide this already? Yes, you did. Next.
Hello, my name is Amber Zhao, and I'm coming up on doing three years of volunteer advocacy work with the Crime Victims Treatment Center, and I'm here today to provide my testimony. The volunteer advocate position is so unique because my job is to be there for one person and to prioritize their needs. I get to spend time with survivors, listening to their stories, learning who they are, and understanding their concerns. When I'm able to connect with a survivor, I can see their body language shift as the emergency department becomes a safer space for them and they're more receptive to our care. Advocates are so integral to a survivor's experience because we're trained to be constantly looking for ways to make a survivor comfortable and to improve their experience in the healthcare system. I once had a survivor tell me about a horrendous IBS flare-up that they had, and then share a concern about a potential GI side effect of HIV prep that they had heard about from their friends. I was able to let their doctor know so that they could spend some time addressing this concern, and because the survivor had more information about their options, they were able to regain control and make the best decision for themselves. Even though advocates are present to help survivors work through their emotions and advocate for survivors' needs, it's still imperative for healthcare providers to be informed on how to provide trauma-informed care. I once worked a case where a doctor dismissed the survivor's concerns and chalked it up to her being emotional, which made the survivor very distrustful of him. He was obviously impatient and annoyed with how the survivor was experiencing their trauma, and it was clear that he was rushing the interaction. In his rush, he failed to do a basic physical exam on the survivor despite her being there for a domestic violence incident and obvious bruising. I had to step in and ask the doctor to do a physical exam, which I shouldn't have had to do. This same survivor then asked me for my medical opinion on whether or not she should take a certain antibiotic. Even though I was there, the survivor's care and experience in the emergency department was still severely compromised due to the doctor's unwillingness to treat a patient with trauma. Other survivors have asked me to conduct the safe exam instead because they trusted me more than the providers that had the educational background and licenses to be doing this exam. Another thing to consider is that survivors of assault are not the only patients that need trauma-informed care. There are patients in all specialties that will have associated trauma. I used to work at a fertility clinic, and almost every patient there had some kind of trauma associated with pregnancy. The skills I learned as a volunteer advocate transferred over to my work at the fertility clinic, and I was able to provide trauma-informed care to these patients. Knowing what to say to someone that is experiencing pregnancy loss makes all the difference in whether or not that patient follows their doctor's instructions. I always like to say that it doesn't matter if someone is the most knowledgeable doctor or the most up-to-date on new research and medications if their patients don't trust them. It's imperative, then, that all healthcare providers be able to provide trauma-informed care. With increased funding, CVTC can provide comprehensive training and resources to providers at New York City Health and Hospitals and make trauma-informed care accessible to all New Yorkers. The volunteer advocate program at the Crime Victims Treatment Center has changed the lives of countless survivors, and it has been the honor of a lifetime to be a part of it. Thank you.
Thank you. One other question that I have, is that Grace? Translation. Even for regular folks, I find that it's difficult. Like if regular, no stress, you know, you're talking, you have no problem. And translation, things can be lost in the translation. Can you imagine that you have so much going on, and then you're having a phone to be talking on the phone instead of a person? I mean, how you think that we can? I know it's always a problem of getting, you know, hiring folks, but what are your thoughts? Have you been seeing the conversation on the phone with someone that's, you know, trying to cope with a sexual abuse on the phone?
Thank you so much for bringing that point up, because one of the things we also know is that it's not just the words, but it's how you say those words and how that is really conveyed to the survivor. Absolutely, one of the things that we want to do is that we want to be able to pay folks who speak another language more, right? Because we want to prioritize those skills, knowing that we have a diverse group of survivors who present at the hospital. At this time, what we try to do is really try to watch our survivors' faces as they're talking with our interpreter to get a sense of how is that landing for them, and we feel empowered to talk with our interpreter as best as we can. We also try to talk to our interpreter before connecting with the survivor and letting them know that this is a sensitive situation and that we may be talking about things around sexual violence. And so we want to prep our interpreters as well over the phone to know that this is a very sensitive topic, and my hope is that that will be conveyed in the services that they provide to our clients.
To tell you my honest opinion, you should not have an interpreter over the phone at all, especially when it comes to someone with sexual abuse that's trying to talk to you, and most of the time, most culture, I would say, but even the Caribbean folks forget it, they don't even want to talk about it.
Yes, I agree with you. It's such a disservice to our clients when we don't have all the languages provided, and even something as common in the Spanish language, right? That we try our best to hire and try our best to provide a diverse group of advocates as well, but one of our struggles is to recruit any advocates on Staten Island. And part of the reason why we are seeking more funding is because we know that if this volunteer opportunity is actually compensated, that we would reach a whole diverse group of people, right? Folks who may not have the privilege to be on overnight call, to get to the hospital, who might not have access to a car in Staten Island. If we compensated our advocates, that they'd be able to really make the time and the space to volunteer with us.
What can we do now, actually, to make people aware, like knows? Power, Ms. Brookpower, you coming? I want to acknowledge, because I didn't even know you were leaving now, that's CM, our Majority Whip, Brookpowers, and our CM, Guterres. Thank you, I've been joining. Yes, it is very difficult. I cannot even imagine you going through this, but what can we do in terms of right now? Because I know we have the shortage in all aspects of our lives. What can we do to actually help in terms of know your rights, like folks that are there? Because my whole thing is how we can bring people to understand that it's not your fault as much as we can, to reach out throughout New York City, to let folks know you're not alone. You did not ask for that. So what do you think that we can do to actually make the process go and a little help that they can receive from the city?
That's such a large question, isn't it? Because I think there's, all of us have different roles to play, right? And I believe everyone can support the sexual violence work and prevention and education. And so I think, in addition to funding, one of the things we can do is make sure that our city council members and elected officials are talking to our rape crisis programs, right? And asking them individually, what is it that we can do to amplify your voice and the work that you do? I think in Staten Island, it is a bit of a unique situation for us because of the borough we're in, but we would love to be able to get our voice out there and to have, in terms of recruitment, really asking people in the communities to think about this opportunity, right? And to be a part of this opportunity. Because the more volunteers we have, the less people actually have to be on call. Right now, we just finished up a training in February, and we only have four advocates, right? And so we're asking all of our advocates to cover three shifts a month, but even then, it's not covering the full month. So if everybody could participate in that, I think that would be fantastic, and just making sure that there's enough coverage, and that maybe there are more advocates on call to be able to provide multiple supports for survivors.
Thank you, I appreciate that.
Thank you.
I want to know your advice, because when I was listening to you, there's many areas I see you very, you talk about that I, I want to know your advice for me and for us, what can we do actually more?
Absolutely. So one is to expand the safe examiner training program. The Alliance provides some of that training, so does the Crime Victims Treatment Center, but it is incredibly underfunded program, and we're not able to reach all of the hospitals that are there. That is one piece. And the city council, I also have to thank the city council because of what funding does exist to the sexual assault initiative, it is funded through the city council, so thank you for your support on that. That said, all medical staff, doctors, nurses, physicians assistants legally can conduct a safe exam even without the official training. And there are mechanisms for providing basic levels of training for those staff without them having to go through the full 40 hours, so like an initial level of training so that everyone at least feels comfortable with those provision of services, and at least has basic training about the standard of care that should be required for all sexual assault survivors that comes in the door. I recently had an emergency room doctor say to me, you know, if someone walks in the door with a heart attack, the doctors and nurses don't take a step back and say, "Oh, I'm not a cardiologist, I can't treat this person." Everyone jumps in, they stabilize them, they make sure that they're receiving the care necessary. But that unfortunately isn't the reality for a number of sexual assault survivors in hospitals across the city, whether they're H&amp;H hospitals or not. We hear stories from survivors and advocates of survivors showing up in an emergency room and being turned away and sent to another hospital, and that is completely unacceptable. And so making sure that all staff have a basic level of comfort to at least provide immediate care while a safe examiner is on their way. That's the first thing. As far as the rape crisis center advocates, there are whole communities in New York City who actually don't have access to a rape crisis program. Just recently, I had a hospital in the Rockaways reach out because they have zero advocates that are currently connected to their hospital, and they conduct between 30 and 50 safe exams in a year, and not one of those occurs with an advocate present. Unfortunately, the gaps in services are far more likely to exist in the outer boroughs the farther you go out. I'm sure that's not a surprise to you that those lack of services exist out there, but there are organizations that are primed and ready to step in and provide some of those supports, and those tend to be our culturally-specific organizations that are working in those communities. So being able to provide some of the support necessary to those organizations to be able to expand their services and provide that culturally-responsive, linguistically-appropriate care is critical. And I should also note, rape crisis programs are all certified by the State Department of Health, but of the programs currently in New York City, none of them that are rape crisis programs are any of these culturally-specific organizations because of some of the standards that they cannot meet, because of some of the financial investment that's required to expand their services. And what that means is that those organizations cannot access state funding to support their organizations to build out their sexual assault response. So honestly, building the capacity of the culturally-specific organizations to step in where there are gaps in the community is going to be critical to ensure that all communities get equal access to care.
Thank you. I'm going to honestly tell you that I'm, I was a ER nurse, and I never did any exam at all. So you're all right, so I, because I'm always waiting for examiners to come.
And it's understandable.
And once, one of our survivor, I mean, I said myself, you're a survivor, once you can walk and come and get the support. So you're already surviving, you're not living with all this trauma by yourself, you're able to take yourself to the emergency room, and one of them actually, I recall, we could not find her because she was staying, and then by the time the examiner, we had to look all over, and finally, we found her. But it's just, thank you. But, um, it, it just, thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
It's very sensitive to me because, um, I had a bad experience and I always explain that. It was, um, actually, I, I have to testify on that one. It was just, um, Halloween day and I went, um, my father told me not to go to the, because I usually take sport on evening after, uh, after a regular schedule. I would say, let me go take a sport at another high school. And he told me, no, it's Halloween, don't go. And I said, no, I like my perfect attendance. So I have to go. So, um, somebody tried to grab my chain. It was just putting his hand on my breasts was something I had to spend a good two years washing myself. So I just cannot imagine, that's why whenever I'm talking about this, it's very sensitive. And can you imagine the person came just for the chin, but because his hand touched my breast and I felt two years I'm in the shower washing myself. So I just cannot imagine. I just, so I want to do everything I can.
Thank you.
And today's my birthday and I say, this is the, when they asked me, I should have canceled whatever, I said, no, no way, no way. So that's the least I can do to touch because, and, um, I'm happy I had courage to say just to touch and I had to wash myself all the time in the shower for that. So, yeah, thank you. Um, I have to acknowledge we've been joined by Councilmember Charles Barron. And, oh, I have some remote, um, Councilmember, thank you, Councilmember Moya. We're joined by Councilmember Rivera as well. Thank you. Thank you for your time. Thank you. Oh, you have a question? Oh, sorry, Councilmember Barron.
No, I just, um, this is shocking. You know, these reports on rape is very shocking. And are you being adequately funded by the mayor to handle this? Or has cuts in the budget hurt your ability to address this? This is a serious, shocking, uh, question and issue, and I think the mayor should really prioritize it and see to it that it is adequately addressed.
I absolutely agree. Um, and to tell you about the, the funding levels currently at the city level, there is almost no funding for sexual assault services.
True.
Um, with the exception of funding coming from the New York City Council in the form of discretionary funding for the Sexual Assault Initiative. Uh, that funding goes to cover some of the training of safe examiners. It goes to cover some culturally specific outreach and, and care in communities. Um, but I'm going to be honest with you, it is not enough. Um, and, and that is shown then in organizations not being able to actually build out a more complete response and do the community engagement necessary to support survivors. We have a model right now where we expect survivors to come to us in the worst moments of their lives. We expect them to come to us, to a police precinct or to a hospital emergency room. But that, that is unfair. What we don't have right now is a robust community outreach program to actually go to survivors or to engage the types of organizations that those survivors are presenting at. Because honestly, it's a minority of survivors that are showing up in a police precinct or even in a hospital emergency room. But they are engaging with community-based organizations, they are engaging with culturally specific organizations, they're engaging with faith leaders. But right now, we don't have the community engagement mechanisms to actually go out and make sure that survivors know what services are available to them or to be able to connect to trusted organizations. And so no, at the administrative side of the budget, that funding does not exist.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you so much for coming up. Thank you.
Thank you. Before we, oh, thank you. Before we will hear testimony from that, then we will take a three-minute break.
I'm going to be exclusive for one second because I have to go to Par and I'm coming right back.
Thank you, Admin, for your patience. Whenever you're ready. Um, will you, all of you, will you please raise your right hand? Thank you. Do you affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth, afford the committee? And to respond honestly to the council members' questions? Thank you. You may begin when I'm ready.
Thank you. Good afternoon. Your honor, I'm Ms. Rosa, Director of the Relations and Jury and other members of my team. I want to start by noting our appreciation for the council's support for our city parks.
Thank you. Thank you.
And I am an OBGYN. I'm joined by my colleagues, Dr. Bridget Alexander, Emergency Medicine Physician and Director of Forensic Clinical Services at New York City Health and Hospitals, Kings County, and colleagues from New York City Health and Hospitals Correctional Health Services. Thank you for the opportunity to testify on this most important topic. As the largest safety net provider in New York City, H and H is proud to provide high-quality care to all New Yorkers regardless of background or ability to pay. Sadly, many of the communities that H and H serves are affected by violence, including rape and sexual assault. H and H stands ready to provide trauma-informed care to survivors in the short term as well as in the long term. H and H recognizes that the experience of sexual assault, in addition to its physical toll, can leave deep emotional and psychological scars, which makes trauma-informed care of the utmost importance. Key components of trauma-informed care include creating a safe and welcoming environment, engaging in active listening and empathy, recognizing the impact of trauma, empowering survivors through collaborative care, integrating mental health support, and connecting survivors to community resources. All eleven of the system's acute care facilities are designated by the New York State Department of Health as Sexual Assault Forensic Examiners, or SAFE, Centers of Excellence. There are Sexual Assault Response Teams, also known as SART, at every one of our emergency departments who have gone through intensive training, which includes training in trauma-informed care, and have been approved by the New York State Department of Health. Their tasks include properly identifying, collecting and storing forensic evidence, accurately documenting injuries, and attending to the significant emotional needs of survivors. Safes come from multiple disciplines and include physicians, nurses, and physicians' assistants. When a patient reports a sexual assault, they are connected with a social worker and/or advocate regardless of whether or not they meet evidence collection criteria. If the criteria are met and the patient wants the evidence to be collected, a SAFE is called including a physical examination and medical history, to ensure the patient's health and safety and collect evidence of the crime. Following the examination, the patient is provided with medication to prevent unwanted pregnancy and/or HIV and other sexually transmitted infections. If the patient desires, the social worker and/or advocate can connect the patient to law enforcement. When a patient is discharged, H&amp;H offers follow-up care either at an H&amp;H facility or at one of the family justice centers, which are located throughout the boroughs. At the family justice centers, survivors can receive mental health support, assistance with orders of protection, as well as other resources. Treatment, including evidence collection and follow-up care, is provided free of charge, regardless of insurance status or ability to pay. H&amp;H is proud to be on the cutting edge of providing services to survivors. In 2022, New York City Health and Hospitals, Kings County, launched the Clinical Forensic Medicine Fellowship, a one-year training program designed to build leaders in the field of clinical forensics for emergency medicine. The fellowship teaches clinicians to identify and care for victims of violence and trauma, prevent the destruction of potential evidence, assist in legal proceedings, and recognize and document patterns of violence and abusive behavior. The fellowship will expand emergency clinicians' ability to be trauma-informed, patient-centric, and culturally sensitive when interacting with patients. The fellowship is truly a collaborative effort between agencies and organizations, including the New York City Office of the Chief Medical Examiner, or OCME, the Mayor's Office to End Domestic and Gender-Based Violence, NYPD Special Victims Division, John J. College of Criminal Justice, SUNY Downstate Medical University, Kings County DA's Office, CASA NYC, Family Justice Center, and Kings Against Violence Initiative, also known as CAVI. H&amp;H also offers a Child Abuse Pediatrics Fellowship at Bellevue, a partnership with Maimonides, which is the only child abuse pediatrics fellowship in New York City. This accredited, three-year fellowship trains pediatricians on all aspects of sexual assault, diagnosis and treatment for children zero to eighteen, along with physical abuse and neglect. H&amp;H is committed to providing compassionate and comprehensive trauma-informed care to survivors of sexual assault. In accordance with the principles of trauma-informed care, we will continue our work to create a safe and welcoming spaces, space for survivors, empower survivors in their care decisions, and ensure that survivors receive long-term support. Thank you to the committee for the opportunity to testify and for your continued support of health and hospitals. I look forward to our continued partnership, and I am happy to answer any questions you may have. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for being here. And thank you for helping us addressing the sensitive topic that we need to. And starts. Since the beginning of 2023, four hundred and twenty-nine rape cases and one thousand four hundred and twenty other sex crimes have been reported to NYPD. According to some estimate, fifty thousand rapes occur each year in New York City, and many of which are left unreported. Can you please provide an estimate of how many individuals visited H&amp;H facilities for rape and sexual violence care this and last year? This year and last year? Can you give a demographical breakdown by race, ethnicity, age, gender, sexual orientation?
Last, so over one thousand survivors seek care each year. Patients are disproportionately female, Black, and Latinx, and most survivors are between the ages of eighteen to twenty-five. The most commonly reported zip codes were in Mott Haven and Corona.
In what?
Corona.
And sexual orientation?
We don't have that information right now.
Can you provide that after? Can email it?
Yes.
According to data from CDC, young people under twenty-five and members of LGBTQIA+ are at the highest risk of getting raped and sexually assaulted. How do you personalize care for the vulnerable populations? Are there any differences in protocols for caring for children and adults? Are there services that take into account transgender people and other members of LGBTQIA+ members?
Thank you for that question. Across our system, I'll take children first, if that's okay. Across our system, when children less than thirteen present to our emergency departments for acute sexual assault, the ED attendings perform the forensic evidence collection. Social work and behavioral health also conduct assessments in the EDs for all of these children. All eleven of our hospitals have a child protection coordinator, social worker, who is on call for social work for handling questions about management and in coordinating follow-up for the survivor. Four of our hospitals, Bellevue, Elmhurst, Jacoby, and Lincoln, have a Child Protection Program, or CPP, with board-certified child abuse pediatricians who are on call twenty-four-seven for phone consults from their hospital's ED to advise on cases and to provide medical and behavioral health follow-up in their clinic. Kings County also has plans to create a child protection program. Our four CPPs consult on nearly a thousand cases per year, a half for sexual abuse and about a half for physical abuse. And I already covered the Child Abuse Pediatrics Fellowship Program at Bellevue, which, as I said, is a partnership with Maimonides, which is the only child abuse pediatrics fellowship in New York City. And in terms of LGBTQ, yes, thank you. Our staff undergoes mandatory LGBTQ-plus sensitivity training and follows guidelines that promote inclusivity and respect for unique needs, including the use of preferred pronouns and addressing specific health concerns.
Thank you. Services at H&amp;H, please tell us about the sexual assault services that NYC Health Hospital are committed to providing across your network. Could you walk us through what a survivor experiences when they come to an H&amp;H hospital for support after sexual assault? What personnel do they regularly interact with first? Where physically do they go to seek services? And once they disclose sexual assault, where do they wait for services? How long of average wait times? Where do they receive sexual assault services? What is the protocol for supporting patients in NYC H&amp;H who disclose sexual assault as in-patients or otherwise outside of emergency departments?
Thank you, Chairwoman Narcisse. There, there were multiple questions, so if it's okay, I would just like to walk through. I would just like to walk through what a survivor does when they enter our facilities. So we understand that when it's applied to survivors of sexual assault, trauma-informed care is of utmost importance. And we know that the experience of sexual assault, as I said before, can leave deep emotional and psychological scars. And this can manifest in various ways, such as anxiety, depression, and post-traumatic stress disorder or difficulty in forming relationships. So this is what we do. We create a safe and welcoming environment. From the moment a survivor walks through the door, it's essential that they feel secure and supported. We offer a private space to change. We provide clear explanations of procedures. We obtain explicit consent before initiating any examination. And this is to help create a sense of safety. We practice active listening and empathy. We know that being present and empathetic when listening to a survivor's story is crucial. We validate feelings, avoid judgment, and use open-ended questions to encourage them to share their experience, allowing for more accurate assessment and tailored treatment plan. We know that trauma can impact in a myriad of ways. So they may struggle to recall details of this assault. And this can result in a brain's response to trauma. So recognizing this and offering reassurance can help alleviate feelings of shame and blame. We empower survivors to make decisions about their care, which encompasses collaborative care. And this can include discussing the benefits and risks of different treatment options. We allow them to set the pace of their recovery and respect boundaries. Terms of integrating mental health support, we know that many survivors of sexual assault experience psychological distress. And by providing access to mental health services and collaborating with therapists, we can create a comprehensive care plan that addresses both physical and emotional needs. We provide resources and referrals, and we connect survivors to community resources, such as support groups, legal aid, and financial assistance. And this can help ease the burden of recovery and provide additional avenues of support. I believe another question asked about wait times. Actually, I'll just walk you through. So, yeah. So when a survivor walks into one of our facilities, they are prioritized for triage. And we also perform an examination to make sure that there's no clinical impairment. And so, Dr. Alexander, did you want to?
The way we become a center of excellence is, sorry. The way we become a center of excellence is when a patient of sexual assault is identified, their triage, our nurses know they are triaged at the highest priority. They don't wait in the waiting room. They go to a safe, designated, standardized room that is pretty much duplicated within all eleven hospitals. It's a safe place. It's not in that crazy busy ER. The advocate or the social worker is with the patient within the state guidelines within twenty minutes. And the safe examiner arrives within one hour. And pretty much hits that mark unless, for example, there is some medical needs that prioritize. If the patient has been strangled or the patient lost consciousness, something like that. We still do our ABCs, so to speak. And the forensic will come once the patient is stable. So there's a medical component that also happens. From there, we make sure the patient has the Bill of Rights, the Sexual Assault Bill of Rights. And, you know, it really explains everything that we're going to do, how to keep the kit for twenty years. They have phone numbers that they can call if they release to police. Phone number they can call and find out the progress of their case. And of course, you know, they're given very good follow-up with the family justice service. Just to mention, when you say empower, when we do these exams, we don't want to re-traumatize. It's invasive. We don't. We try to have that our survivor, and I'm going to say survivor, victim, and patient, I'll interchange those, as much empowerment as possible over her or his body that we are touching. Every envelope, may I do this? These are the next steps. If there's a way that the patient can swab their own cheek, that allows that patient to take control over her body. So there is steps by steps by steps that incorporate our time, two to four hours doing this examination. Anyway, only four percent report this crime and only sixteen percent come to the ER. And they're just extremely brave individuals.
Thank you. One more of my fellow members. What is the protocol for supporting patients in NYC Hospital who discuss sexual assault identifications?
Thank you for asking that. The medical providers who are OB-GYNs, who are also trained in trauma-informed care, will go see the patient. A social worker and advocate is involved. And if necessary, certainly, the patient is given the option for evidence collection. And it goes through the same protocols as if a patient presents to the emergency department. They're also given follow-up care.
So responsibility. And sexual assault is a right approved by the state by the health. Seven of the acute care hospitals.
Yes.
Responsibilities include identifying, collecting, and sorting forensic evidence. Accurately, accurately documenting and pending to. Quarantine and rape crisis counselors to help recover victims from physical and emotional sexual assault. And forensic examiners to perform a thorough evaluation, including a physical examination and medical history to ensure the survivors' health and safety and sexual appearance of the crime. Who provide care? Can you please walk us through the process with a rape or all sexual violence required? Walk in at an emergency facility where sort of present. Who is the first point of coordination? The rape crisis counselors present with the survivors at all time? Does the counselors work with them?
Oh, God, I messed up. I did not put the mic on. And the people that are there listening would not be. So I have to repeat it for you. Response team, SARS, approved by the New York State Department of Health in eleven of its acute care hospitals. SARS responsibilities include identifying, collecting, and sorting forensic evidence, accurately documenting, and attending to the significant emotional needs of the rape victims. Each SARS team includes rape crisis counselors to help recover victims from the physical and emotional trauma of sexual assault. And forensic examiners who perform a thorough evaluation, including a physical examination and medical history to ensure the survivor's health and safety and collection of evidence of the crime. And who provide care? Can you please walk us through the process when a. when a rape or sexual violence survivors walk in the H and H facility where SART is present? Who is the first point of communication? Are the rape crisis counselors present with the survivors at all time? Does the counselor work in conjunction with the survivor's advocate?
Thank you for that question.
I think some of them you answered, but you can go back.
Once a patient reports a sexual assault, they are placed in the highest triage priority. They are placed in a safe and private area. And they are given their sexual assault essential Bill of Rights. Once the patient is medically cleared, and this is really important, as Dr. Alexander stated, we need to make sure that the ABCs are met, airway breathing and circulation. So, once the patient is medically cleared, if they have evidence of other trauma related to sexual assault, they will receive services within the hour. The SART team is notified as soon as the patient discloses the assault, and they remain in touch with the provider while the patient gets medical clearance. Some cases will require more medical exams, which will result in a longer wait time for a SART. The care is standardized across our eleven facilities. And, um, did that adequately answer your question?
I think, because some of them you already answered, the survivors, how they stay with their person. Okay. Um, compos- composition of SART. What is the composition of a sexual assault response team, SART at H and H? And what are the roles and responsibility of the team members? How many members of SART are actively working at any given time? Do you believe you have enough employees in SART to meet the day-to-days of sexual violence survivors? If no, how many more people need to be employed to meet the demand on a daily basis? How many people ha- care by SART? On a daily basis, how many people are care, I mean cured by SART?
So, we maintain twenty-four seven coverage at each location and all, at all of our eleven facilities. Whenever possible, safe exams are performed by certified safe examiners. It is not often that these exams are not, are done by non-certified safe examiners. We appreciate, um, you know, we offer, I'll just say, uh, we offer advocates to all of our patients. Um, some are volunteer advocates and some are advocates who we have trained within our health system to respond. So, patients are always offered an advocate. And, um, in terms of what is needed, we appreciate the support of the council. And we would just say that support is needed in pursuing more expertise in this area.
Yeah, but do you think, my question, how many more people, do you need people right now? Because we have shortage all over. We just want to make sure that we address the needs around, um, sexual abuse. Because we have too many happening in New York City. And we want to make sure if you experience that, when you, I call you survivor, when you walk to the door, you get all the support to get you through. Because, um, as I give the testimony, simple, as for me, my experience, it was a nightmare. So, that's the reason I'm asking those questions.
So, I'm gonna let Dr. Alexander fill in. We do provide trainings around the city with the expertise of our staff to train more safes.
Yeah, I, I feel that, um, we are all suffering like, um, the whole hospital, um, apparatus, I guess. I mean, we're all losing staff members from COVID. It was very difficult. So, yes, can we use, uh, more training? We have more sexual assaults and training, uh, throughout the city is, is, uh, is lower. That, that's a known, that, that's been published. I think that there is different types of trauma and violence. And that's why the fellowship is so important to identify not only sexual assault, but non-fatal strangulation with the crossover of sexual assault and domestic violence, uh, child neglect that is, you know, overlooked as well. We absolutely could benefit from more resources. I think, um, the, uh, different advocacy groups, um, testified about that. We are all working so hard. Um, and I, I applaud the, the team that is doing that work in our hospital.
I'd also like to say, um, that, um, uh, just tell more about the training. So, safes are required to complete a forty-hour DOH-approved didactic course. Um, they perform approximately ten pelvic exams in the skills lab or more until they become comfortable. Um, and then they are precepted for the three real cases. Um, and in order to maintain DOH safe certification, the safes must complete fifteen credits every three years. And the safe curriculum includes trauma-informed care.
But how many members of SART are actively working at any given time? You have the number?
We provide a, it's an on-call schedule. So, that twenty-four seven safes are called to the emergency room of the hospital. Oh, I'm sorry.
How many people are here?
How many people? Okay, so safes come from different disciplines. This includes physicians, nurses, and physician's assistants. In terms of safes, in Brooklyn, we have nine. In the Bronx, we have six. In Manhattan, we have eight. In Queens, we have fifteen. We have rape crisis counselors. We have dedicated social workers. We have SAENS, which includes the nurse examiners. That is included in the safe count.
Did you say safe or sorry?
So, um,
What's the difference?
One is a nurse examiner, and we have other medical professionals who can also perform it. So, the overall term is safe.
Sexual assault.
Forensic examiner. And that includes physicians.
But I asked a question, oh, yeah. S A R T, that's what I was asking.
SART is Sexual Assault Response Team.
How many?
That's the program, and then the examiners themselves are called.
Is it safe?
Yes.
I might, might confuse you on that.
We, we call it a team because we work with other disciplines. We work with NYPD. We work with, uh, different advocacy groups in the city. We work with the ADA. We provide expert testimony. We do case review with the, the DA about medical terminology, about, um, understanding, uh, the lack of injury or there are injuries and being able to explain that. And then we do the same thing, educate the jury about our cases as experts.
Gotcha. Okay. For forensic exams, how does H and H and safe ensure that survivors of sexual assault receive timely and comprehensive medical care, including evidence collection and forensic exam? Do you collaborate, I think you answered that. Do you collaborate with the medical examiner's office for forensic exams? If so, what does the process look like? How long does it take to get back to the report? How long you get to the report?
Um, the ME's office is, um, for the, the, this post-mortem. The same kit is used for male, female, uh, the living and post-mortem. We all use the same kit. How the ME's office, uh, works with us is with our forensic fellow, spends time with the ME's office and does, uh, autopsies and sexual assault kits. And, uh, does dissections in non-fatal strangulations, reviews, uh, ballistics, and other forensic type of, uh, deaths. They identify deaths. What we do is try to do forensic, be the forensic advocate for the living. And that's through our expertise. And that is through our documentation and working with other agencies.
I did, I hope that answered.
How long it takes to get the report?
Oh, excuse me. Um, if someone, um, does decide to, uh, work, you know, uh, sign off chain of custody with the kit, we have a turnaround of a hundred days. And that's in our Bill of Rights, the state's Bill of Rights. And two follow-up numbers that the, uh, patient and survivor can call and update themselves, uh, about their case.
Oh, so you, they, they get access? They get the numbers, they get the information that they can follow up themselves? Delays in forensic exam due to the pandemic. Medical examiner's office has affected, I mean, H and H efforts to assist rapes, um, survivors. Are there any differences in services in the center of excellence compared to your acute care hospital where safe are placed?
I'm sorry, what is the question again? I apologize.
Let me start it. Due to the pandemic.
Yes.
We know medical examiner's office has affected, right? H and H efforts to assist with, um, raped survivors.
Okay.
Because of the delay, right? Um, are there any differences in the service in the center of excellence compared to acute care hospital where safe are placed?
Yeah, so our eleven facilities are all, um, are all, uh, standardized and are all, um, safe, safe centers of excellence. Uh, there is no difference after the pandemic.
No.
Before the pandemic. Services have not changed due to COVID nineteen.
That's great. Good to know. Cost of visit, is a survivor ever charged? I know you don't charge.
We do not.
Um, but in the care that you receive, it's totally free? The care?
Yeah, the, 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 the patient is not billed for any part of the exam.
Okay, so it's only for outside private hospital? Because some folks telling me, some survivors goes to places and they get. So, now all survivors, if they want to come, but I, how do you, do the, how you do the reach out? Uh, do you go to the communities? To how people know that over in H and H, all the services are free? Because I'm hearing some survivors are having, um, problem with paying when they go to certain hospitals.
I'm not able to answer what other hospitals do, but we know that we don't charge for any part of the exam. I'm not sure if we advertise that or not. That's just the, the way that we have always operated.
My question is, how you put it out there, those survivors will know. Are you partnering with communities, um, organizations, CBOs to let folks know? Because if we, if a person is a survivor fighting this, needs support, they should not be paying. So, are you, since we, the city, H and H, providing this service for free? Are you reaching out? How you promote that to let survivors know that you can come here? We got you.
Thank you, Chairwoman Narcisse. And now that we know that that is a priority, I think we'll take that back.
Okay. Um, okay. Can all New York City survivors expect to receive the same services for support at all H and H hospitals? If services are not consistent across the hospital system, what are the difference in services offered in each site? But I think you said they receive all the same services.
They do.
It's just across the board?
Yes.
Okay.
Dr. Alexander.
Go ahead.
I'm sorry, Dr. Alexander did bring up a good point about, you know, we do partner with some of our community-based organizations. Um, and some of the ones that we work with are Safe Horizon, Arab American Family Support Center, and SOTI Yetu Center for African Women. And so, certainly, those, um, CBOs would be aware, um, of what H and H does. Um, but of course, as I said before, um, your earlier idea is great, and we perhaps should advertise that even wider.
Okay, thank you. And I do have a recommendation too. I think, um, since we know the age group that being affected, especially teenager, we're not gonna know. I think we have to promote it that more in, uh, high school. And, um, some may say junior high, because we're talking about ten and eleven years. So, um, the school can be aware of it. And actually, we can have a, for me, I think we should have, um, information, um, literature, any little brochure or something. So, they know that in other law, there is a place that's safe, that, um, they can go or call to, um, to get support. I think we need, we need to be more active. That's the reason today, um, I really find that it's a right day to be here. Um, we need to do more. We should not let people go in the shadow and going through alone. And especially, um, even you have not been through this process. You know how difficult it is with this pandemic. And now more than ever, I think we have to take an active, uh, a front, um, driver's seat to say how we gonna help and make sure young folks, older folks, every age, any sex, whatever the status, should know that, um, if you've been raped, there is a place you can go. I think we need to be more active on that. The New York State Department of Health has established standard for sexual assault forensic examiners. Um, safe. Designated hospital that provides specialized care for sexual assault patient are all NYC Health and Hospital in compliance with the standards outlined for safe designated hospitals. If not, why not? Though the law allows any licensed medical personnel to perform a safe exam, survivors benefit from the support offered by a speci-, I mean specially-trained and certified safe examiner. Can you tell us who performs safe examination in New York City Health and Hospital locations? How often are exams provided by non-certified safe examiners? How do you recruit safe examiners? How are safe examiners scheduled? Do you maintain twenty-four seven coverage, which you said yes already? How you, how, I mean, how are you, your safe examiners compensated?
So, whenever possible, and this is really most of the time, safe exams are performed by certified safe examiners. It's really not often that they're done by non-certified safe examiners. When that happens, however, they are medically-trained personnel who also have training, um, in, in, um, doing, collecting the evidence, um, but also in trauma-informed care. We, uh, often recruit within our own staff to sign up and serve. Uh, many of our nurses or other clinical providers inside H and H, this is the certified safe examiners. Uh, we also have retired nurses who are trained. Um, and, um, you know, forensic examination is an academic course. Academic lectures are also given to nurses in training and other medical personnel. Um, and from there, if a person expresses interest and they, um, want to become a safe, they undergo extensive selection process to become a safe examiner. We maintain a twenty-four seven coverage, um, system, um, at each of our eleven hospitals. And, um, there is a fee structure set up to reinvert, reimburse safe examiners for their time and performance of duties.
Can you share that, what's the fee?
Um, I do not have that information at the present time.
Resources for survivors. What support and resources does H and H offer to survivors in the aftermath of sexual assault, including mental health care, legal advocacy, and follow-up care? What mental health care services are available to survivors through H and H? And how are they delivered? What mental health services are provided through CBOs? How does H and H collaborate with? How does H and H collaborate with other healthcare providers and community organizations to provide comprehensive care and support to, I mean, to survivors of sexual assault?
So in terms of integrating mental health support, we provide access to mental health services. We collaborate with therapists. And we create a comprehensive care plan that addresses both their physical and emotional needs. We provide resources and referrals. We connect survivors to community resources such as support groups. We connect them to legal aid or financial assistance if that's needed. And we also provide additional, you know, referrals for support. We provide follow-up appointments, referrals to specialists, and coordination with community resources and support services to help survivors in their recovery journey. In every borough, there are family justice centers that we connect our patients to. And there, they can get mental health support, orders of protection, and other resources instead of coming back to the hospital, which they may, of course, prefer to avoid.
Thank you. I just have an H and H approach caring for survivors from diverse cultural and linguistic backgrounds. And what resources are available to support language access and cultural competency? What training and education do healthcare providers are safe received to provide compassionate and effective care to survivors of sexual assault?
So the language services.
Just while you find that. Also, the trauma-informed care is part of our 40-hour training. And that's the way we become safe certified?
And I'll say, at the system level, H and H works closely with the mayor's office to end domestic and gender-based violence on a steering committee and a working group. These include the Strangulation Roundtable, Healthcare and GBV Working Group, Female Genital Mutilation and Cutting Advisory Committee, and the Kings County Hospital Fellowship Program. The community-based organizations we work with include Safe Horizons, Arab American Family Support Center, and Souti Yetu Center for African Women. H and H Borough Safe Programs engage in community outreach events periodically. And in fact, today, in the Queens Sexual Assault Task Force is having an event today and health and hospitals is participating in that event today.
I'm going to take a pause because our majority whip have a question. Brooks Power, thank you.
Thank you, thank you, thank you. So, and thank you for the testimony today. Apologize for being back and forth, but we have a couple of hearings going on. So after receiving and caring for a victim of sexual assault, how does health and hospitals provide or connect victims with long-term care? I also wanted to know, what is the average length of stay for a victim of a recent sexual assault or rape? Seeking care at a health and hospital facility, what resource or guidance are victims provided at the point of discharge? And lastly, I want to ask, how many members of the sexual assault response teams are trained by health and hospitals? What is like the process of sexual assault response teams being approved by the New York State Department of Health? And I can repeat as you answer if you need me to.
You want to take that part first?
Okay, so there are different educational routes that we can get our our sexual assault forensic examiners trained. They're in different, they're offered at different times of the year, so sometimes they're upstate, sometimes they're with the Alliance. I used to, I actually wish they were still here because I used to be on faculty and develop that curriculum. Because I, just to say that H and H was the first center of excellence in the state of New York. So we're very proud of that. So we've been, I think, on the ground running. But just to let you know, there's online courses now because of COVID and there's different ways of getting certification. That was one part. What was the other part? Sorry?
I can say. Okay, thank you. So it's our mission in the public health system of New York City to provide care to anyone regardless of a whole host of identifying factors, including gender identity. We take this very importantly and we provide staff with various cultural competency trainings on an ongoing basis, as well as we offer training to new employees, orientation, and annual in-services. And we have a system-wide blended training through webinars, e-learning, and in-person session, including topics of diversity and inclusion, cultural competency, LGBTQ health, unconscious bias, language access, disability and effective communication, and interreligious awareness. As you know, we have a diverse workforce that reflects all of the communities that we serve. And over 80% of our workforce identifies as either African-American, Black, Hispanic, Latinx, and/or Asian. Nearly 70% of our workforce are women.
Thank you. And, okay. Can you just talk? I guess as granular as you can, because I'm just really interested also just for personal information as well in terms of the process of being approved by the New York State Department of Health?
Well, we were approved in 2004. And that was in the Bronx. I just remember it was a long application and lots of visits to the model that we provided. And I would have, I would have to go back online to find that big list of recommendations. But the part is having a standardized room, being safe, certified, making sure that we know how to properly document, making sure we have a standardized physical and history form that everybody's being asked the same questions, whether it's 3:00 in the afternoon or 3:00 in the morning. So there's a consistency on a forensic interview. Making sure our staff gets trained yearly, which we do. And we go beyond that. We are actually making sure people know about safe examinations in PA school, in nursing school. We provide training for special victim detectives when they're first coming to the police academy. So they know why it takes two to four hours of very meticulous competent examination, because they wonder what we're doing in there. We're going at the victim's, the patient's pace. If they need to pause, we pause. So we explain that to our officers. So they have a better understanding why they're waiting so long for that kit. We developed also the suspect kit because, and H and H is the only hospital system that does suspect kits in the state and in the city. And that helps exonerate or helps make sure that there's certain DNA that should not be on a seven-year-old. Thank you so much.
Thank you. We've been joined by CM Joseph. One of the thing that you said that got me. You said you did not have, the pandemic did not affect you in term of staffing at all? Like you, your coverage remained the same? Go ahead, go ahead.
I, I wanted to say it didn't affect the fact that somebody had come in. It did affect the fact that we had to wear goggles and isolate ourselves and keep our staff safe. Yes, we were in compliance with COVID, but people came and got and had their examinations done, so.
But in term of staffing, you don't have no interruption? You have enough staffing to maintain all the exam?
We had some people take more call and some of our older, still young, safe examiners maybe not do as many shifts because we, you know, we want to keep our staff protected. But all the equipment was outside our door and it is an isolated area. So there is no going to be re-exposed going through the busy ER, if that helps.
I have to acknowledge something. We have the CM that on Zoom, they can ask question because we don't have a Chrome. We don't have enough folks here at the same time, you know, but I'm sure if they have question, they can always send it to us. So we'll ask the question for them. Now we'll get CM Joseph for question.
Thank you, Chair. Thank you so much. This is such an important conversation. I had a couple of question. How does trauma-informed care for survivors of rape and sexual assault in the H and A align with broader efforts to address sexual violence and 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 support in healing? You look puzzled. The question is on.
You want to know how trauma-informed care, how we, well, first, there's a traumatic event that happened in someone's life. We try to make sure they're triaged as a priority. They are taken to a safe, standardized room that is just for sexual assault. No interruptions there with someone, either a social worker or an advocate, until the examiner comes with us in New York State within one hour. We developed this program and because of the training, we really want to re-empower our victims of trauma. And I think I said this to the Chair. And, you know, we go through every envelope, every swab, and we get consent. If the person has to take a rest and come back to it, that's okay. That's all right. If there's a way that the patient can take control over her bodies, maybe do the swabs underneath her fingernails herself, that's great. The more choices that that victim has to be in control of her body is what we want to give. And and everybody has a very good follow-up. We have those family justice centers, and I think we listed a few others, but they're in every borough. And they can get legal counsel and also mental health or just follow-up at our facility.
And what what type of support are available for survivors? And in terms of partnership with CBOs, what does that look like?
Thank you for asking. So the CBOs that we work with include Safe Horizon, Arab American Family Support Center, and the Souti Yetu Center for African Women. And we also have the family justice centers that we tie patients to, and they're located in each borough. And we certainly ensure that patients can receive follow-up care there. And and those provide wraparound services, including legal services, mental health services, support, support groups, tie into other financial support services, and really provide a lot of the care that the patients need.
And in terms of culturally relevant care, is that culturally, how is that linguistic background, background, language, culture?
Well, we try to connect patients to community-based organizations that do this type of work, that meet their cultural values and identity. We have cultural competency training embedded in what we train our entire staff on. It happens through their orientation training. It also happens on annual recertification. It includes cultural competency. It includes trauma-informed care. It includes, there are lots of different trainings that are interrelated that are provided.
There was one other question I had. Give me a second, Chair. I had another question about the LGBTQ plus AI community. How are they supported in this space as well?
Yes. So our staff undergo mandatory LGBTQ sensitivity training and follow guidelines that promote inclusivity and respect for unique needs, including the use of preferred pronouns and addressing specific health concerns.
And and our transgender community as well, are they supported as well? Thank you. Thank you, Chair.
You're welcome. Now I have some question for CM Rivera. I'm going to have the question on her behalf since we didn't have no Chrome for her to ask. Transgender people are over four times more likely than cisgender people to experience sexual violence, according to 2021 report published by the UCLA Schools of Law. It's critical that our city's healthcare system appropriately meets TGNC and B, New Yorkers' unique social and health needs, especially when considering rape and sexual assault. I am proud to have, which is her, she's proud to have secure funding for H and H transgender patient health navigators last session. And she's equally proud that H and H was the first U.S. municipal healthcare system to mandate LGBTQ AI plus training for all staff members in 2021. Today, there are seven Pride Health Centers at H and H sites citywide dedicated to the needs of LGBTQ AI plus patients. Could you please speak to how staff training at Pride Centers include trauma-informed care for trans survivors and or makes appropriate referrals? First, how would someone in custody inform a CHS staff member that they require care following a sexual assault if there is a private way to do so? How does CHS handle instances of non-production of, for care after someone, non-production for care after someone requests care for a sexual assault? How does CHS connect returning citizens who are survivors of rape and sexual assault to care in the community?
So the, I would say that the trainings that are provided to the staff who work at the Pride Centers is the same training that is provided to all New York City Health and Hospital staff. It's not whether or not you work there or not. We're all take the same courses on LGBTQ inclusive and sensitive behavior. Absolutely.
Sure, thank you. So I'm Jeanette Merrill.
Oh, sorry, I did not put my mic again. How would someone in custody inform a CHS staff member that they require care following a sexual assault? Is there a private way to do so?
Thank you. I'm Jeanette Merrill. I'm the AVP of Communications and External Affairs for Correctional Health Services, which is a division of New York City Health and Hospitals. So thank you for the question. I think the first one is around reporting. So if there is a patient who has experienced sexual abuse or assault, that patient would be seen in the clinic. So every jail facility has a clinic that operates 24/7. So most patients are brought to us from the Department of Correction. There are PRIA guidelines, so Prison Rape Elimination Act, that mandates reporting. So that is how most patients would come to us. However, patients can also disclose to a CHS provider during any clinical encounter. So that's also a common way that a patient would disclose. Patients are also able to call our Sexual Abuse Advocacy Hotline, which I'll turn to my colleague to discuss a little bit more about that program. I'll also mention the Health Triage Line. Patients can call to speak during certain hours live to a nurse or to leave a message. And they can call that through the housing or the phone in their housing area or through their tablet. If you want to talk about SAA.
Yeah, so, hi, I'm Dr. I'm Dr. Rebecca Justy. I'm the Director of the Complex Care Program at CHS. And the Sexual Abuse Advocacy Program is a CHS-led intervention for survivors of sexual assault while in custody. And essentially, they operate a 24/7 hotline where patients can call from their housing area discreetly and privately, confidentially, to the hotline which is answered by CHS staff. And the program also provides a lot of support navigating the process for reporting, ensuring the patient has adequate follow-up with medical and mental health care services, ensuring that they are taken to the hospital and are receiving care upon returning. And then they also meet with the patients to provide them with a list of community resources. There's a hotline that's available. It's not run by CHS. It's an independent entity that they can call for support as well as a number of community-based organizations for survivors of sexual abuse and sexual assault that they can connect with once they are released.
Thank you. I was just checking with the CM if she has any follow-up question on that. She's good? All right, continue with this. Rape, sexual assault care in CHS. Can you explain the process for receiving mental? Did you mention mental? I don't, mental health? Mental and medical care when someone reports that they are experiencing, we have that already. You just answered. I think most of them I heard your answers already. Okay. Oh, if a person in a custody requires a forensic exam, would they transfer to H&amp;H Hospital Bellevue or Elmhurst?
Sure. So as I mentioned, if a patient has experienced sexual abuse or assault, they would be evaluated in the clinic. And if it is required, a forensic exam is required, the patient would be transported via EMS either to Bellevue, generally for men, or Elmhurst for women, where they would receive.
Women for Elmhurst?
Yes, where they would receive the same community standard of care my colleagues have described in the H&amp;H facilities.
So out of the blue, I just want to know why the women in Elmhurst and the males, is it just their arrangement or just happened to be?
So that's true of our off-island specialty care, inpatient services generally. We have this partnership with Bellevue for men and then Elmhurst for women.
In what cases would someone who has reported sexual assault not to be offered a forensic exam?
Yeah, so patients, as Jeanette said, are brought to the clinic and meet with a physician or a physician's assistant who collects a thorough history. And then they will call our ERG care providers and consult with our ERG care providers, present the case. Some examples of times when patients wouldn't be transported would be if they don't want to be. If it was an instance of verbal abuse versus physical or if the abuse was deemed to be really remotely in the past, you know, months, years ago, and an exam would no longer be necessary. I'd like to just say that the threshold for sending patients is very, very low. So, you know, we recognize that many patients may not feel comfortable disclosing the nature of what happened in the medical clinic, particularly in the jail. And so if they, even if they're not disclosing details that make us think that they need a physical exam or a safe exam, if they're requesting to go to the hospital, they will be transported there.
Thank you. At a intake in CHS completes a screening assessment, which include questions about history of abuse. Advocates report that in many cases, these histories are inaccurate. Can you describe the screening and where it takes place?
Sure. So every patient who enters custody, enters Rikers Island, goes through a medical intake process. When you visited the island, we saw the men's clinic at EMTC, and then women go through Rosie's. So they undergo a 24-hour intake process, starting with the Department of Correction and then ending with the medical process. So it's a multi-step process involving nursing, medical, mental health. So as part of that, it's akin to a medical assessment or intake at a hospital. So we are screening for intimate partner violence. We do ask if the individual has ever been abused by an intimate partner, whether they've ever been in a domestic violence shelter, or whether they have ever had an order of protection against someone. So the intake, as you probably remember, can be very chaotic. It's not a place where we would necessarily deliver or provide mental health services, but we would make referrals to medical or mental health care based on that initial screening. And I should also mention, at Rosie's, we do have an IPV intimate partner violence program available to patients. So it could be a referral to that service.
How does CHS connect survivors of rape and sexual assault to care in the community? If a survivor has a forensic exam completed during their detention, and how can they track the status of the kit? Where are kits stored if a survivor chooses to pursue legal charges at a later time?
Sure. So all of our patients are offered re-entry services, which may include some involvement from SAA, as Dr. Justy described earlier. We can refer patients to the family justice centers. We also can help make appointments. Patients who are part of, are under the care of our mental health service will also receive comprehensive discharge planning. In terms of following up on a rape kit, because we don't conduct the forensic exams, they would go through Health and Hospitals and NYPD and a process as someone in the community would.
Where they can get the kit if they choose to? Where the kits are, I mean, stored? Because for some reason I didn't get that one.
I might actually turn to my colleagues on kit storage.
H&amp;H stores the kits with hospital police, so we maintain the chain of custody unless it's released to NYPD because they want the kit processed. Either way, we have a commitment with our Bill of Rights, Sexual Assault Bill of Rights, to hold the kit for 20 years. And I believe the governor just announced where that warehouse will be upstate someplace. That has not begun yet.
Okay. So on the Bill of Rights that you giving to, when the person leaving, going out, on the Bill of Rights you giving them, did that information is in it to know what's the process like? If they choose to have a legal process going on, do they have all those information?
Well, that is all part of the safe examiner to explain and the social worker. It's reinforced with the social worker or the advocate. And the Bill of Rights, you know, basically says if you choose to report to the police or not, and you are given contact information on the back part and phone numbers if they do, plus they'll have any of their follow-up if they change their mind and want to report later on.
But at least they're aware?
Oh, absolutely. The sexual assault response team is really the first step in building that trust.
Okay. Research suggests that 70% to 90% of women who have spent time in jail have experienced sexual assault prior to their detention. With this statistic in mind, how does CHS respond to physical and mental health needs of women at RSMC?
Yeah, so I think working in a correctional space, trauma-informed care is really foundational to our services. We know that most of our patients have experienced trauma in the community. And part of why we have built out this IPV program at Rosie's is recognizing that unique need. And all of our mental health clinicians are certainly well-trained in trauma-informed care.
So I'm guessing you take that seriously, right?
Absolutely.
Transgender, non-conforming, non-binary and intersex people, TGNCNBI people in custody are at high heightened, I mean, high risk of sexual violence, particularly when placing gender-misaligned housing. The task force on issues faced by TGNCNBI people in custody states in its report that violence is an enormous part of the experience of TGNCNBI people in custody. What training does CHS provide for staff that working with the population?
Yeah, thank you for that question. So I testified in January about our TGNCNBI care and our commitment at CHS to gender-affirming services, and that includes gender-affirming mental health care. And most of our TGNCNBI patients are housed at Rosie's where they can access some of the IPV services referenced earlier and of course, always receive individualized care. But I think we also recognize this is an area where we can always improve services, expand, enhance, particularly as we all learn more as healthcare services.
How many people received Clinical Forensic Medicine Fellowship since this launched in 2029? 2020 or 2009? And how many? Okay, child abuse that pediatrics? Or pediatrics that we have?
I'm sorry, are you asking about the number of pediatric cases?
Uh huh. And the forensic, how many people received Clinical Forensic Medicine Fellowship in there? In the, what fellowship? Or for the H&amp;H?
There's one fellow per year.
One fellow per year?
We're the only physician-run fellowship in the country, and we haven't even completed our first year. We feel we would like to be the leaders in New York City, and that's through the support of H&amp;H. I mean, it's taken 30 years for us to get here. You know, when, you know, the 90s, they just made a sexual assault task force and they just passed the SAR bill, which you stated no means no. That was only in the 2000s. And we just had the Repayment Act, can, uh, 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 bill that was passed. Can you imagine any other crime? You get hit on the head and you're robbed. You don't pay for your examination, but you're sexually assaulted, you do. So that bill was passed, you know, with all of us working, being advocates of sexual assault patients. And then we had the Debbie Smith bill that was passed, which means that they wanted to get rid of the backlog, all these cases, you know, just like sitting on shelves for years and years while the rapist keeps going on and repeating the offense. That has all changed. It's taken 30 years. And now we have, you know, a forensic fellow that works with all of the other departments. We are developing policy for non-fatal strangulation and training our EMS, our police, our DAs, all the DAs. We only have Manhattan and Bronx left, but we were, you know, over 500 professionals because there's a crossover with non-fatal strangulation and sexual assault and domestic violence. It's not just one little singular thing. And we want to de-escalate this violence because when you have a strangular, it's 750% chance that that intimate partner is going to be murdered by that individual.
Sure.
And when we ask the right questions forensically, we realize that's a police officer that is shot, you know, just pulling somebody over the side of the road to give a ticket. When we ask the right questions, they have a history of domestic violence with strangulation. So this is safety policy and we want to be on the cutting edge and we have a forensic fellow in, you know, medicine fellowship. I'm sorry, I'm just excited.
No, no, I'm with you because I want to get solution.
Yeah, and this is just one part of it and, um, you know, she's, I can go on and on. I'm just very happy.
So we're gonna have, just to push, keep on pushing and making sure we get all the resources because that's part of the resources that we need.
Yes, yes.
Sorry, I don't want to get after today, which question we need to cover. Child abuse, pediatric, pediatrician, have any pediatrician fellowship that we have for child abuse? That specify? Do we offer that? A fellowship on that too?
We do.
Specifically?
Yeah, I just.
Yeah, but I don't know how many.
I think there's three facilities and I don't know.
There's three facilities, but I don't know how many fellows.
I don't know how many fellows. I think it's three, I just remember three facilities and.
We can get back to you.
Yeah.
I don't want to keep you, even though this is a very important topic, I don't want to keep you all day. So I'm gonna say thank you. Thank you for the work you do. Let's continue pushing. And let's be the leader of the world. Like we said, this is New York City after all. Let's address things that matter to us. So thank you so much. Thank you for your time.
You so much as well. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you Chair. Thank you very much. The members of the administration, you may go if you like. Or you can stay here up to here. We will now hear from the test, from the public. I would like to remind everyone that I would call up individuals and panels and all the testimony will be limited to two minutes. Well, this time we are doing three minutes. So for the remote testimony, if you are testifying remotely, once your name is called, a member of our staff will unmute you and you may begin once the sergeant at arms sets the clock and queues you. So I will be calling our panel, remote panel now. So Zainab Tawil, Jacqueline Colazo, McCall time, Zainab Tawil, whenever you're ready.
Starting time.
Hello. Good morning and good afternoon Chair and members of the committee. My name is Zainab Tawil and I'm testifying on behalf of the New York City Anti-Violence Project AVP, which is the only LGBTQ-specific victim services agency in New York City and the largest national organization solely dedicated to working with LGBTQ and HIV-affected survivors of violence. Although sexual violence is just as pervasive and deadly in LGBTQ and HIV-affected communities, mainstream medical response services do not serve survivors of violence equally across sexual orientation and gender identity. Calls coming into our 24/7 crisis hotline demonstrate a clear lack of cultural competency on behalf of H&amp;H staff and suggest a deep-rooted bias that leaves hospital staff unequipped to meet the needs of LGBTQ rape and sexual assault survivors. An AVP client who is a black transgender and undocumented woman went into Kings County Hospital following a sexual assault, seeking a rape kit and medical care for injuries sustained. seeking a rape kit and medical care for injuries sustained. After being turned away without receiving the care she needed, she states she no longer feels comfortable returning to an H&amp;H. A bisexual, disabled AVP client that sought care at Bellevue Hospital following a sexual assault felt the staff questioned her sexual history in a manner that reflected bias towards her sexual orientation. Following a stress-induced seizure, the client was involuntarily hospitalized and was diagnosed with bipolar disorder by the resident psychiatrist, a diagnosis that a secondary opinion did not concur. She has not had access to or been able to amend her medical records, and this incident has also negatively impacted her ability to advocate to police regarding her assault. These are only a few of the testimonies AVP has received from clients following their treatment at H&amp;H. The city is underestimating the community's needs as it pertains to ensuring a strong crisis response model that supports LGBTQ survivors following rape and sexual assault. As such, our recommendations are twofold. One, ensure that H&amp;H staff receive proper LGBTQ cultural competency training that is reviewed by trusted LGBTQ community organizations such as AVP, as well as expanding access to resources for LGBTQ survivors. We ask that the city and state a quality control committee made up of LGBTQ CBOs to review and recommend improvements to the mandatory training. As such, expanding resources, resource offerings may allow LGBTQ survivors to also more adequately receive care. We recommend that the city work in partnership with the Pride Center and other LGBTQ CBOs in NYC to identify the needs of survivors and utilize the existing clinics to offer expanded care that specifically responds to said needs. The city still has the opportunity to create positive change for LGBTQ survivors of rape and sexual abuse, and it begins with the Committee on Hospital Hearing and Responding to the Voices and Recommendations of Community here today. Thank you so much for allowing me the opportunity to testify here today and on behalf of the Anti-Violence Project.
Thank you.
Jacqueline Colazo, whenever you're ready.
Starting time.
Good afternoon, my name is Jacqueline Colazo, and I am the Sector Director of Domestic Violence Services at Volteers of America Greater New York. I would like to thank Chair Narcisi and the members of this committee for the opportunities to submit the following testimony. Volteers of America Greater New York operates domestic violence programs in confidential locations throughout New York City. Our domestic violence programs provide comprehensive services and safe anonymous housing for survivors and their children experiencing domestic violence. Perpetrators who are physically violent toward their intimate partners are often sexually abusive as well. Domestic violence is the leading driver of homelessness among families in New York City, surpassing eviction for the past several years. Annually, an estimated 10 million adults in the United States experience domestic violence or intimate partner violence, and 80% of domestic violence events involve injuries to the head or neck. Despite the clear risks, domestic violence survivors are rarely assessed for brain injury in their interactions with law enforcement, medical practitioners, mental health systems, or victim services. We thought at VOA, it was critical to look at the connections of memory loss, confusion, impaired judgment, depression, and anxiety, and document the incidence of brain injury in clients at our domestic violence shelters to see if they match prior studies that have been published. So, in the summer of 2022, we partnered with a top researcher of concussion in women, Dr. Eddie Sussman, a neurosurgeon, adjunct professor, and CEO of Safe Living Space, a group of medical practitioners working on raising awareness on TBI. Together, we began, during Domestic Violence Awareness Month in October, to screen survivors of domestic violence for TBI, many of them survivors of sexual abuse as well. With 146 screenings of head of households, we found 67% reported at least one injury to the head or neck within the last year. And 55% reported more than one injury to the head or neck in the last year as well. We need to see domestic violence and intimate partner violence as both traumatic and medical components which require therapeutic and medical treatment. Screening, diagnosis, treatment, and training are the four pillars of the solution to addressing TBIs in domestic violence situations. New York has a unique opportunity to lead the way in rectifying this inequality. In our health systems, we look forward to working with members of the city council on common sense, policy-based solutions to this longstanding challenge. I thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next is McCall time, whenever you're ready. Apologies if I pronounced your name wrong.
Starting time.
Are you there?
Hello, excuse me, I didn't hear my name well, sorry about that. My name is Maqem Cham, and I'm the Housing, Health, and Consumers Action Network at Sydney. Sydney means Center for the Independence of the DCA Board at New York. I'm here to testify and say that I support this bill because it has a great impact to minorities with mental and developmental disability, also immigrants with language barriers, like my folks who speak French and may not be able to manage English as they wish they would be able to. And also, I appreciate the work that you guys are doing to help people who are struggling and are victims of mental health. I strongly hope that this bill will bring justice to the victims and survivors of sexual violence. When it comes now to outreach and helping get the word spread out to minority groups and people with language barriers, I mean, like our hard-to-reach community, so I'll be down to help and support. And by the way, my email is M as in my first name and Cham, T-H-I-A-M, my last name, at sydney.cidny.r. And thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. If there is anyone present in the Zoom or in the room that hasn't had the opportunity to testify, please raise your hand. All right, seeing no one else, I would like to note that written testimony, which will be reviewed in full by committee staff, may be submitted to the record up to 72 hours after the close of this hearing by emailing it to testimony@council.nyc.gov. Remote, people who testified remotely, can you please send it to us online? Thank you. I will now recognize the individual who signed up but did not have the ability to testify today. So Jimmy Meager, Julima Jihay Fisher. All right, council member, Narcisse. Chair Narcisse, we have concluded the public testimony for this hearing.
Once again, I want to say thank you for all your work, Manu, and my chief of staff, and all my staff that worked for us to be here this afternoon. I want to say thank you for all the testimonies, everyone that came. And this is a very important topic that we have to follow up, because those are the folks that goes in the shadow. They hurt, they need support, they need all kind of support that we can give and let them know that no is no. And we have to continue teaching our children, and from early on, that they are support. And you see them. And that's the reason that I think, more importantly, we here, all my colleagues that come in and out, this is very important. And we're gonna conclude this in saying that if you need help, we always have the survivors' numbers. And most importantly, you can reach to your council, manic district, whoever your council member is, and start the conversation if you're afraid. So I thank you all, we finished, we concluded.